Okay, I will call a meeting to order. Welcome, everybody in Zoom land and forever to our monthly meeting February 9th of a roll call.
Mayor Mirandi.
I am here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Bender.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Hello.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Okay, thank you all for joining us tonight. Usual rundown here, see things at the end, so get it moving. First, we have a financial update. Is Michelle here or not?
No, she's not. I'll go through it.
Okay, thank you.
Tax forms, the 1099 to W2s were sent out. The Affordable Care Act forms, which have to go to the government, will go before their due date at the end of March. The DEC approved all the expenses for the tree grant, so we're just pending payment on that. The NICE Serta grant was submitted for the quarter, and we did receive payment last week on that. Unpaid taxes. This year, we only had five properties, which typically it's 10 to 15 that we have to send up to the county. This year, it's only five. So in spite of everything else that's going on, yeah, that worked out well for us this year.
That's the silver lining of COVID.
Yeah, well, that's what happens this year.
God bless the people, though. That's nice.
Health insurance letters for the retirees were all sent out, slight increases across the board on that. Michelle has a conference call with FEMA tomorrow to go over the tropical storm ICAS submission, and then budget worksheets we sent out earlier today to most of the departments. I don't know that she got everybody, but most of those went out.
Okay, thank you. Larry on yet or not?
No.
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 Okay, we'll go. We don't have anything on recreation that I see, do we? Is anyone on for recreation?
No.
Okay, and next is the planning board. Is Matt on by any chance?
No.
Okay, I'll read that. The planning board has the following matter before and at this time, old business 51 Chestnut Street, Wells Fargo. That's the bank, for all those that don't know. Change to the lighting plan to address its New York State regulations or statute to provide minimum light levels out to a 60-foot radius of all automated teller machines, install a light post and replace wall and canopy light fixtures on building exterior, add new wall fixtures, property located in the historic district. As per Chapter 64 of the Village Code, a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Review Board is required. Site plan approved required from the planning board as per 134-10F4, and no new business. Next, we have ZBA. Somebody like to read that? I'm gonna just keep coughing as soon as they start reading.
Eric's here.
Eric's on.
Okay.
I'm also on, Amy.
Yes.
How are you?
Good. We had two meetings in January. 33 Market Street was the subject on January 7th. This application proposed installing a six-foot fence in a side yard in the B1 district. The applicant argued that the zoning code did not regulate fences in B1 and that the code enforcement officer therefore should not have referred the project to the ZBA for a variance. The board closed the public hearing and took up the applicant's request for an interpretation. The board concluded that the referral had been correct. The code section on B1, which is 134-9, contains a cross-reference that incorporates, quote, applicable requirements, unquote, of 134-17, which is the section that limits fence heights in yards. Since fences are common in the B1 district and since regulating them there serves a public purpose, just as it does elsewhere, the board saw no reason why the fence height restriction in 134-17 would not be applicable to the B1 district. So having confirmed the CEO's referral, the board next considered the applicant's request for a variance permitting the six-foot fence. The board granted the variance because the site's distinctive features justified the extra height and mitigated any harm from it. The approval carried two conditions: the fence should always have the gray or earth tone color shown in the application, and if the fence was ever rebuilt, it should retain essentially the same design. Next meeting was on January 21st. First, we returned to 33 Market Street just to review drafts of two resolutions that grew out of the decisions at the previous meeting. The board formally approved the resulting versions. And then, on the subject of 212 Main Street, we held a workshop. This application proposed building an additional floor on top of a non-conforming freestanding garage. The board held a workshop with the applicant and scheduled a public hearing for the next meeting, which was on February 4th. And that's all.
Thank you, Eric. And for those that don't know, Eric stepped up in like a void, and I'm totally appreciative, and I think you're doing a great job, so I'm really thankful that you stepped up. And I know that you're gonna do, you guys do a great job, so thank you again for stepping up.
You're here.
Glad to do it, babe.
Okay, I see Larry here relaxing in his bedroom and...
Hey, Larry.
Do you want it? Do you need a little time? We can skip through some more stuff and come back to you. You might be on mute.
Larry, you're muted. I am ready to go.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. For the month of January 2021, we had 48 calls of service. We had no arrests. We had 27, I'm sorry, 29 moving violations. We had 38 parking tickets for a total of 67. So the total number for the year will be 67, meaning it's the first month of the year, and the total number of service calls was 48.
Larry, on an average, how many arrests do you think you make a year?
Um, last year, at the last meeting, I think I gave a total of 10. We've gone anywhere from the time that I've been the officer in charge. It's probably average between, I wanna think, 10 and 15, mostly for vehicles, mostly for suspended license driving without a license, unauthorized use. A couple for drug arrests in the past that I can recall offhand, and a handful of domestic violence, violation of order protections.
Thank you.
A little more than what you asked for, what?
What's that?
I said a little more than what you asked for. We're averaging, I'd have to look at it, but I'd say we're averaging, you know, between 10 and 15, I would think. Give or take.
Okay, great.
Can I ask about the...
Stick around. Sorry, go ahead, Heidi.
All right, about the mental health incident, was that referred to health services, or are you able to give a little more information?
Mental health, it's a wide variety on what it entails. If it comes over 911 as somebody needing assistance due to mental illness, that's one category that'll fit in there. If it's an individual who was an actual aided, where we get a 911 call for somebody needing assistance via the ambulance, and we show up and they deem that as a mental health issue, which that was, that's what that was for the month. That's what that goes down on. It's a broad range of different mental health issues on that. I know we've had a couple of incidents in the village that are a few people, actually younger individuals that come over as aiders that are special needs children that are refusing to get on the bus. They won't go to the school, get on the school bus, they won't do this, they won't do that, and we get called for that. So that will go down as a mental illness, not mental illness, but a mental incident. So there were a bunch that go on that, to be honest with you.
So this month was, it was, an ambulance was called, is that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
It kind of falls between an aided and a mental, mental illness, depending on what it, what we look at and what we deem, what it will be. That specific one was somebody who needed assistance.
Thank you.
Larry, you're gonna be, you're staying around for the little update on the police reform?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I'll ask you then, then, you know, how things are going on your end, or wait until then. So thank you for the report. Next is Bobby on.
Yep, I'm here, Dave. Good evening, everybody. How you doing, everybody? Thank you. All right, I'll report here. As you know, the town hall is still renovating it. We had lost a couple days due to the snow. If you look at the one side, the side, it really looks nice with the coins and everything. It looks, it's coming along pretty good. We're hoping to get in there. I keep on saying this, early March, early April. I'm thinking close to mid-April myself, but we'll see how things go over the next couple of weeks. Lot of outstanding issues there. As I mentioned last month, we're still working on new contracts with the Garrison and Phillips Town Ambulance Corps. We're having a workshop with them tomorrow night. Hopefully, there's a couple little issues between what we want and what they don't agree to, but hopefully we can get them all worked out tomorrow night. As I mentioned last month, COVID-19 vaccination center, we did have the first one, a couple, the second week in January, and the people who are getting their second shot will be starting on the 11th, which is Thursday. I don't know of any future ones that are coming in. As everyone knows, really don't know until like a day or two before to get the vac, to get the vaccine. So it's tough to plan ahead, but we just gotta do the best we can over the next couple of months, and hopefully everyone will get their vaccines in the next six to nine months, we hope. We hired Cheryl Rocket as our secretary of our special boards. We had a lot of good candidates, and we thought Cheryl was the best, and she started on February 1st. As everyone's aware of, the Garrison Golf Club, they're doing a transition to the, transition over to Shakespeare Festival. We, this is gonna take quite a while to get done. We're thinking nine to 11 months. We had a site visit on January 24th. It was pretty cold, but we still had over 70 people from the community that went out and walked the area. Glenn Watson was there. We were almost there, an hour and a half, close to two hours, walking around. And we're having another site visit on February 14th, if anyone wants to join. You're more than welcome to come up on the Sunday, the 14th at 9:30. You'll be hearing a lot about this over the next several months. As you know, there's many conditions and concerns that people have, mostly traffic conditions, noise, water, how many people are gonna be there. All these questions will be addressed in the next few months, hopefully, and get this resolved. Also, to let everyone know, this is a very phased project. For our first year, what we're looking to do is get the tent up, a parking, parking lot facility, a temporary building for to pick up tickets. So, so that's gonna be in 2022. If everything goes well, we'll get, get the tent up and the parking lot and so forth, what I just mentioned. We passed, we passed a resolution to put an RFP out for providing solar panels on the, on the rec center. As you know, that's a pretty big building. I've been, I've been working on this for almost three years now. It took us this long to get to this point, and the RFP should be in the paper this week and multiple papers, and hopefully we'll get a couple people that have been on this, and we'll get this thing up and running by the end of the year. It's gonna be no out-of-pocket expense at all for the town, for the town. The money we're gonna be saving on electric basically is gonna be paying for this every single month, so there's no effect for the taxpayers whatsoever on this. So we also had a meeting with the comprehensive plan. I see Matt on here, not, I mean, maybe he's gonna talk about this, I don't know. But anyway, the comprehensive plan, we reviewed that at a high level, and everyone, we're looking at everyone to go on the website and take a look at that and take a look at it and see what everyone thinks. And we'll have some public hearings in the next few months regarding this as well. We hired Christopher to take over Roberto's mother position as the climate smart coordinator. And also just let everybody know, on February 18th, Our Lady of Loretta is hosting a blood drive. Blood supply in our community and all over the United States is dangerously low. So if anyone can give blood, I greatly appreciate that. We're planning zoning and comprehensive board are still meeting via Zoom. And if anyone, we're still looking for people who join the cemetery committee. Thank you.
Bob, can I have a fast question? In your written report, the third item down, which is actually number two, says working with Putnam County on the COVID-19 vaccine. The last sentence says those who are scheduled to get their second shot, and you're, it, the report says January 11th, I assume you mean February 11th.
Sorry, it should be, I'm sorry, it's supposed to be February.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me. Yes.
I just sent a village resident your way who's interested in cemetery committee. And so I connected her to Mike, so there's one more.
Fantastic. Very good. Thank you. Yeah, well, good, thanks for picking it up there, Fran.
Problem. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, Dave.
Historic District Review, Sean or someone on?
Unable to make it.
Somebody like to read that? I will definitely start coughing.
I'm coughing as much as you are, so it's gotta be somebody else.
All right, I'll read it.
All right.
All right. So current applications, in January, we met four times. We approved a window repair and replacement plan at 4 Morris Avenue, and we approved the construction of a back balcony and a replacement of front porch steps at 212 Main. The ongoing public comment period for 29 to 31 Rock Street opened since 1223 was closed, and after deliberation, the application was denied. We met in a workshop session with the homeowners of East Stone Street about proposed changes to their front porch. We held an additional session for the purpose of reviewing and approving several sets of meeting minutes. We met once to continue work on design standards and have another session scheduled for June 7th. February, we have so far only received one new application for solar panels at 26 Main Street. However, we were informed by the planning board chair that their review of the updated lighting proposal for the Wells Fargo branch in Chestnut Street has concluded, so we expect to see that application soon. Further, there are quite a number of referrals out for various projects, including for the construction of the two remaining single-family houses at the Butterfield Development Site. Board slash project notes, we are approached by the engineering consultants for the Rockledge Road Cell Tower project in Nelsonville. The project is required to complete a Section 106 application due to its proximity to the Cold Spring Cemetery Gate House and the Manitou slash former Plumbush Inn, both listed on the National Register, as well as the cemetery itself, which was declared eligible for National Register. However, since the proposed project and these resources are all located outside of the historic district and outside of the village, we declined to comment further. Two, we are happy to report that a high school student, Hannah Benson, will be working with our board during the spring semester as part of their community service requirements at Halden, contributing new photography for our design standards. We would like to thank trustee Foley for introducing Hannah to the HDRB. Respectfully submitted, Sean Hoffman. That's it.
Thank you.
Fire Company Monthly Report.
Okay. Okay, am I unmuted? Yeah. So there were nine alarms for the fire company in January. One odor of smoke in a residence, two activated fire alarms, one brush fire. It was in the cemetery on Peak School Road, an odd time of year, but I guess there was a burn earlier in the day that had hot spots that picked up in the wind. Three EMS assists, one injured hiker on Breakneck Mountain, and that call was turned over to the New York State Department of Parks and the Park Police. One water rescue on the Hudson River. Thankfully, it ended up not being a water rescue. They were dispatched for a report of someone having fallen through the ice, and upon investigation, it was someone walking on the ice along the shoreline. So I guess someone saw a head at a lower level. So I met with the fire company for a site visit a couple of weeks ago, and I'm putting together the photographs I took that day, the, the door. So you know, the, the door, the new side door is in the process of being painted and prepped to hang, and it looks like Travis will be able to repair the frame and get that work done. One of the, one of the firefighters has stepped forward to do that. We did look at the boiler, and I know that's something we're gonna talk about in, in the budget session. So that's on that list. And then, as the part of the rest of the chief's report, let's see, I have, he gave me further notes later, so let me read it from this, this is more illuminating. Okay, so there are two equipment trade-ins and upgrades on fire company equipment. I just saying, saying this for my own clarification, I think it's probably helpful for members of the public to. The village owns the firehouse and pays for expenses related to it and contracts, contracts with the fire company, along with Nelsonville and Phillips Town for fire protection, and the municipalities pay certain operating expenses. The fire equipment purchases are made by the fire companies 501(c)(3). So the current 2004 Polaris off-road vehicle, it kind of looks like a very heavy-duty golf cart, will be traded in for a new model that has more appropriate equipment for mountain and wilderness rescues. It'll have a patient deck. Right now, they have to carry people out on the backboards. It'll have a patient deck for carrying people and capacity for 85 gallons of water on the vehicle. They are able to take the lights off the old Polaris and put them on the new one. Those are pretty recent purchase. A new engine has been ordered to replace engine 1322, the oldest of the two engines, which was purchased in 2000. The cost is roughly $700,000 for the vehicle after trade-in and with some financing. It'll take about eight months for the truck to be built and delivered. I guess the factory had closed downs with COVID. And then another $100,000 will be spent on replacement equipment. Also, equipment that's around 20, 20 years old, they'll be upgrading some battery-operated, replacing gas-operated tools with some battery-operated units and new radios that the company states are compatible with the current county dispatch system and should be compatible with the pending county dispatch upgrade. I hope that's right. I don't know how much we actually know about what the upgrade is gonna look like at the county level. But that's the report from the chief.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is TAB, have anyone?
No, they didn't submit anything.
Nope. Okay, we go to the chamber report. Do we have anyone from the chamber?
Eliza, you're on mute. Eliza, you're on, okay.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I have a chamber report for you. The chamber would first like to thank our village trustees, Fran Murphy and Kathleen Foley, for joining the January breakfast meeting, which was also attended by a variety of town, county, and state officials. The meeting provided our members with firsthand education on how the different levels of government operate and interact, and how the chamber might be able to collaborate with them on issues of mutual interest. So it was a really great meeting and well-attended, and we're just grateful that the trustees had time to come visit and join us in that meeting and present. We'd also like to introduce our new advocacy chair, Jeff Michelson. He's on the call this evening, and we've included the contacts for him, if anybody wants to reach out to him from the trustees. But you'll hopefully be hearing more from him soon. And the chamber would like to express our gratitude to the village for our successful collaboration on opening and managing visitor center amenities in 2020. In our recent community survey, responsible tourist management came across as the top concern for both the small business community and local residents, and maintaining clean public restrooms continues to be a priority for the chamber as a quality of life concern, as a local business concern, and as a matter of public health and safety. We would like, with the village at a convenient time in the near future, to discuss reopening center and public restrooms in 2021. To this end, it would be helpful if the village can assign a primary contact among the trustees so we can begin the conversation. So you guys can help us with that, that would be great. Last announcement is that our next breakfast meeting will be on February 23rd at 9:30 a.m. The trustees and the members and members of the public are welcome to and encouraged to join that meeting. That's it for the chamber report tonight.
Thanks, thanks, Eliza. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
How are you?
I'm okay.
Good, good, good to see you.
Likewise.
So we'll set up a, we'll, we'll work on a meeting probably in March, early March, and get together with you guys and discuss the bathroom and whatever else, all things village and tourists.
Great. Should we reach out to you, Dave, or just, would you be the best contact to reach out to, or do you wanna reach out to us?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe Matt is on, I'm not skipping anything, right? Matt, next?
I think so. All right. So, yeah, let's start with the water. The reservoirs are roughly where they were last year at this time. We did see a 10% decrease from the usage in the system from 2020 last year at this time to current. All bacteria testing was found in good standing. The annual water withdrawal report was submitted to the DEC on the 20th of January. We began reaching out to different outfits and regarding of the rehabs and the filtration units, as we brought up last year. There are 20-plus shows, and they haven't had any major maintenance done to them, so it's definitely needed. Also, coming up in this month or February, the initial PFOS, PFOA sampling. So that's new for this year. We're gonna be doing that quarterly, and we'll be taking the first set by the end of February. The Catskill DEP project, we've had a couple little conversations since the January 7th conversation about everything in the latest email. The four things that they need to be addressed or discussed is the land use permit, as the one that is currently issued, is outdated according to DEP. The Water Service Agreement, I guess there was notes meant for legal counsel input or any alterations that would be requested. This one, I'm not too sure about. It says, provide updates of the Foundry Brook projects. I'm not exactly sure what they're talking about with that, if that's in regards to the upper dam or if there are any projects directly related to the Foundry Brook reservoir outside the water plant. So I need a little bit more information into seeing what that was requested by them. And the fourth thing was, they would like to have Bart Clark add some more information details into the proposed meter vault pit for the connection to the aqueduct.
Sorry, Matt, what's PFOS and PFOA?
I'm probably gonna botch the, yeah, I'm probably gonna botch the pronunciation of it, but it's the perfluoroactin acids and perfluorosotonic acids. Basically, a chemical that I believe is found in Teflon DuPont-made products. So, yeah, they're starting to test that just to make sure that everything is, you know, up to current regulations and everything else. If we need to advance treatment, if it is found with unacceptable limits, but we'll know as soon as we get those results back after we take the test.
Thank you.
Yep. On the wastewater side of things, the results from the testing that we take monthly were in good standing, 96 for BOD, 95 removal for TSS. We had 24,000 gallons liquid sludge hauled off-site. Doyle Security, the alarm system that we use down at the facility, was onsite on January 8th for the annual testing alarms. Everything is found working accordingly. The infiltration intrusion, to begin getting quotes for the cleaning and inspection of the E2 section of the collection system. So we'll start getting quotes for that as well. Waste water facility and pump station inspections, Putnam County reached out to us, and they are, would like to tentatively inspect all the facilities mentioned in, on March 4th. We still have the potable water leak on the W or the wastewater treatment plant grounds. We isolated that, drained it back, and as soon as warmer weather lets up, we'll get to repairing that. I think that's all I got.
Just a little follow-up on the water side.
Sure.
We had been, Matt and I and Bart were at, had a couple conversations with regard to trying to get districts or trying to get Phillips Town and Phillips Town and Elseville on board with the, with, you know, moving things forward with the aqueduct connection. We are talking to David Metzger, I think that's it, something like that. Or the attorney we hired to help us do it worked in New Poles. And so he suggested we reach out to both Elseville and Putnam or in Phillips Town informally, which I did. You know, I sent one to Richard and, and Mike Bowman. And, and then we have a follow-up now, which I sent to the board, a draft that will send like a more formal request, which will help in us, hopefully, in, in this attorney, reaching out to people that he knows that had helped him at New Poles at the New York City DEP. So from that end, I just wanted to update you, we're kind of moving ahead, hopefully, with the, with our new attorney, and hopefully, things will move somewhat quicker. There were a couple of little glimmers of hope again this month.
Solely but surely, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be dead with the surely. Okay.
We'll get it done, we'll get it done.
Somebody will get it. Somebody will get it, yeah. Thanks a lot.
Yep, no problem.
Uh, building department. We have new building permit applications received, fourteen building permits issued, six. Record searches completed, four complaints, one. Oh, I didn't, is Charlotte on? Sorry.
She is not.
No, okay. I, I didn't want to be stepping on toes there. I'm sure she wanted to give this report. Complaints received, one, and inspections completed sixteen. Referrals generated to HDRB seven, ZBA four, and planning one. Application and permit fees collected, four thousand, uh, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Record search fees collected, three hundred dollars and other fees, thirty. Monthly total was four thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Of note, twenty fire inspection request letters were sent out in January two thousand and twenty-one. Inspections are being scheduled for February. Thank you, Charlotte. For those who don't know, we have not been, we have not had fire inspections as frequently, if at all, for quite a while. So Charlotte's got us back online and has a plan and has started implementing. So, thank you, Charlotte. There's Bugsy on.
Someplace.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. How you doing, folks?
Hey, Bugs.
Um, let's see, garbage for the month of January was forty-four point seven-six tons. Recycling was twenty point five tons. We had three snow events totaling twenty-six inches and one freezing rain event. Four Christmas tree pickups. Uh, we removed wreaths with the county's assistance. We took all the benches off of Main Street. We replaced the pump in the lower main estuary with a new Gould grinding pump due to the other pump burning out. It just wasn't a strong enough pump. Pedal Electric came down and fixed the lights at the dock and we are waiting for some parts so they can finish the other two. The two thousand sixteen F-three-fifty plow stopped working, so we had Phillips Town Highway Department help diagnose the problem. We replaced the plow module, selenoid handheld controller, and the batteries in the truck. This seemed to fix the problem, uh, but it recently started doing it again this past storm. The truck did go to Hudson River Truck and Trailer for the recurring issue and it was an electrical issue with the two-yard salter in the back. Hatfield Brothers had to come down with the garbage truck. We had an issue starting it. It was an oil pressure issue. He said we do have a leak, but he's going to need to get it into the garage. And I'm waiting for the new truck to come in before I can bring that up there. The two-yard salter had a new drag chain installed. The four-yard salter had a new drag chain bearings and bearing shaft and mechanical tie-downs installed. Um, we installed a new radiator in the ninety-seven F-three-fifty, which only lasted for one day. I took the truck to MJ Automotive and he said the cab, um, where it's not as secure as it should be, twisted around a little bit and it torqued the radiator. So we got a new one from Autozone, free of charge. They covered it and Jackie installed it and put new flex bushings in it. The spinner bearing on the two-yard salter blew apart, so we had to install a new spinner bearing system during the January twenty-sixth storm. I had to bring Sal Pedala in to finish salting the streets, um, that evening. Uh, let's see, issue with the headlight on the two thousand nineteen plow diagnosed it back to electrical issues. Hudson River Truck and Trailer took a look at it. They said the whole electrical harness for the plow was fried. The harness is covered under a two-year warranty. I sent the purchase information to the representative at Hudson River Truck and Trailer so we could get a reimbursement for parts and labor. And for the month of February, we're going to pretty much be doing snow removal.
Like a fun month, Bugs?
Little bit, yeah.
Okay, uh, justice court, fines, forfeited bales, and civil penalties, two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Parking tickets, three thousand ninety dollars. Civil fees, a hundred and forty mandatory state surcharges, eighteen hundred ninety-two, or a total of seventy-nine hundred, seventy-nine hundred and forty dollars. Let's see, where are we at? I gotta keep scrolling back and forth. To re, let's see, approve, uh, okay, report to mayor and board of trustees. Anything from you guys would like to?
I'm going to jump in at this point for the, um, the police reform survey, if I can do it now. Are we going to do that now? If I can read my tiny print on my tiny printout. Okay. Kathleen and Larry and I met today to talk more about the survey. We're, we're pretty much almost in line with the questions we have. We're hoping to launch the survey within the next couple of weeks at the most. What, what our plans are, meeting on Friday to confirm our questions and then send the questions off to the board for the board to look at them to determine, um, if the questions that we're doing are what they plan to do, what they would like to do. We're applying to advertise in the newspapers and that the survey is going live. We would like to put the survey on, launch it through the village website and then through the, via Village Lift Serve. There is this should go onto the village Facebook page. So we wanted to throw that out to the village board as to whether or not you think it should go on Facebook, which will then push it out through all kinds of social media. So there's a bit of a disagreement into how far we should go with that. Right now, if it goes onto the village website, if it gets in the newspapers and we direct people to the village website, they can pick it up there and there will also be paper copies available at the village hall. Larry said he will bring paper copies to the, uh, to Chestnut Ridge, to the seniors, and then pick them up. And so that's what we're at at this point. Let me see, we want to get ads in both papers. We hope to keep the survey open for a week to chew it the most and then going through Qualtrics, the data can be chumped, uh, pretty much almost immediately as it's going through. And then the rest of it, as we move on, let me just see here. We are hoping to have a draft plan of the, um, the report ready to go. Let me see, I'm losing my track here. Middle of, middle of February, early March. We are hoping to be able to draft, have a draft to the trustees for approval on March fifth, as to what we're going to present. And available to the public via the website and in the village hall for comments, hoping to have a public meeting for comments and our draft planned by early to mid-March so that we're ready to go with our, um, report to the governor by the end of March. That's as far as I can see, that's what we, these are tentatively our schedule for the time being. The important thing is we hope to have the questions for the survey to the board by this Friday to move on from there. I don't know if I missed anything, Larry, Kathleen? I guess not.
Kathleen, you're muted.
I don't understand.
Go ahead, Fran, Marie.
Fran, can you go over the schedule again? What is the proposed date for sending out the survey or making it available?
Uh, the proposed date, let me see. Okay, we have provided the survey questions to the board on Friday. We're hoping to get the survey out by loading it up to Qualtrics next week and launching it, um, next week.
Probably midweek.
Watching it next week.
Watching it next week, uh, towards the end of the week, I would assume, by the time it gets up. And by the time we get the ads in the papers that say it's, it's available where it is available.
Okay, I thought we still hadn't resolved who was going to get the survey.
We have resolved that. It's going, it's going to go.
Sorry, I, this is the village board.
It's me. I'm, I'm on the village board.
Right, and so the five of us, I thought we hadn't resolved amongst the five of us, to whom was the survey going to be sent?
I was just going to tell you what we discussed today and then we can make a decision.
Okay.
So, because we, that, that piece we didn't talk about as specifically. Um, so, we.
Wait, wait, can I just ask a question? You didn't talk about that specifically, meaning who didn't talk about?
I mean, Fran, Fran just didn't, didn't talk in detail. I'm about to flesh that out a little bit for Marie.
Sorry, I was just trying to, trying to understand, uh, just.
That's okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Um, so, we did some consulting with folks who develop surveys and who launch surveys and do market research regarding, um, barriers. We were concerned about, I was particularly concerned about, uh, barriers that would make it harder for people to participate in the survey. We'd originally talked about, um, key codes that would have to be used to get in. Um, and the, and the, the feedback we got was that it is so hard to get people to participate in surveys anyway, that putting up barriers like that to participation would reduce our numbers, could reduce our numbers quite a lot. Um, and so we've chose Qualtrics as the, um, platform because it allows a couple of, uh, features that would allow us to drill into the data and separate out, um, if there were concerns about, um, so, so, so Qualtrics will allow, it's called scraping the IP address so that you know where the response came from. And if it's outside of the village, we can segregate that data, those responses, and we can decide at another date if you want to look at that data or not. And we can also, it also prevents people from sending multiple responses from a single IP address. There was, I think Marie had some questions about being concerned about, um, multiple responses from single parties. So with the assurances we had from the folks that we talked with in survey security, we felt that it was better to err on the side of availability by having the survey available electronically on the website than to put up barriers. Is that, would you say that's accurate, Fran and Larry?
Oh. Larry, okay, Larry.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, I have no problem going forward with that. At least we get to at least like Kathleen said, we can see who the village residents are and who are not, again, by taking, but also listening to everybody that has a comment. But again, you know, that's what I think would be the best way to go.
I mean, it's our plan to, you know, ask the specific questions. Are you a village resident? Are you a business owner? How long have you been here? And so on and so forth. Um, you know, I'm not of the opinion that we need to have, you know, the more we get, the better it is. It's not necessarily the more we get, the better it is. At this point, it's a case of, um, if we, we had talked about coding everything so that we could get it, you know, to make sure that it was just village residents. Um, the ability to do that would mean, you know, doing it by paper and then getting it in and getting them back on. I feel that getting it on a website where people can link in, you know, will get people to do it. I'm not sure if we're going to get any more than the, you know, one percent that Kent got. I'd like to think that some of the village residents would be, you know, would be like, like to do this. In general, we're looking for village residents and business owners, people who are connected with the village. How we can be sure that people who are jumping in this are not, um, you know, in any of those, I mean, we have the pertinent questions. People can, you know, do what they want with them, whether or not they'll be truthful. Is another thing, but in the process of this, um, to get the survey done and to move on with this, I think at this point, and if we do do another survey, I think we should, we should have more time to do it and do it the way we want to do it. This, at this point, I feel was the best way we could get it done, just to, you know, and I know that, that, um, Qualtechs and Survey Monkey both have some security into it. Whether or not we can flush everything out, I don't know. I think a lot has to do with the way the questions come through too. And the questions will be presented to everyone by Friday, so you'll have an idea of what the questions are going to look like.
Okay, I'll just to let you know, I was planning to lie on the age question. You know, I don't know whether or not other people would plan to lie, but I was going to lie on that one.
I prefer not to answer. I just, I'm ever fully, but how old am?
Okay, so, the, the survey is going to be, um, sent to us on Friday of this week.
Yes.
To the board, to the board members for your review, yes.
And then when do you expect to have input back from the board?
If, 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 if you can get it back by the end of the day Monday, that'd be great. It's very short. It's around ten questions. And then, uh, we can get it uploaded up into, to Qualtrics. I mean, we'll do our best. Everybody's got a lot on their plates. If we can aim for the, for the end of the weekend or end of the day Monday, that's great. And so we'll work with it, sorry. So do we have a plan to advertise in the paper for next week? If we, if we were, if we felt confident that we could have it ready for next week, I mean, we could put, the, the PCNR deadline is Friday for next week. They've now shifted their advertising deadlines earlier because they're working with a new, um, printing press. Um, and the courier, I'm sorry, the courier, the current is Tuesday. So, if we felt confident that we could have it done, we could put an ad in the PCNR this week. If not, it would have to wait till next week.
Can they upload, can they upload it on their website?
No, I can just, I think just the link. I think we'd have to refer the link back to the village website.
Okay.
I, you know, we can ask that question though, Larry. You mean in the electronic version of the paper?
Yeah.
We can ask the question. I don't know.
The audience that the PCNR and the current has is way outside of our, of our areas. I think it's easier to put, keep it in the village website rather than to go out to a whole bunch of people that are way outside of our, our jurisdiction, if you want to call it.
We're talking about advertising, right? Advertising.
I know. We're talking about advertising.
But the thing, the thing I was trying to put out there was if, if their deadline is Friday, and we could put it on, on his website version on Monday or Tuesday on the final questions and to direct them to go to the village website.
Oh, yes, ads, ads can go in, ads can go on their website at any time. That, that's not dependent on.
Got you, okay.
I'm sorry, Larry, I misunderstood the question. Thanks, I misunderstood the question.
So, the plan is to, um, publish the fact that there is a questionnaire, a survey by next Tuesday, which would be the sixteenth, right?
Yes.
I'm sure. And then the plan is to close down responses by what date?
I, I was aiming, yeah, for the twenty-sixth. So there were two full weeks that people could respond.
Okay, publication on two sixteen and responses closed down by two twenty-six is not exactly two weeks.
No, no, we, sorry, the I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong date, Marie. I'm looking at the wrong week in my calendar, the twenty-sixth. So the sixteenth to the twenty-sixth is two, almost two weeks.
It's ten days.
Ten days.
Okay.
Well, we're at a tight deadline on the other end, so we have to.
I'm, I'm trying to get to the other end. So, the responses come back on, you're going to close the survey on the twenty-sixth. Is that also the date for closing paper responses?
Say that again?
Is that also the date for closing paper responses?
We, we haven't, that, that was a question that Fran and I didn't get back to talk to, talk about. I was wondering if we might want to adjust and have a longer. I don't expect we're going to get a lot of paper, but we could extend that longer and then input what comes in in paper after that closed deadline.
And I'd like to keep it close to them because, um, and I know Larry had said earlier today that he would bring them to, um,
Chestnut Ridge.
Chestnut Ridge, and then pick them up in about a week. So if we're, if we're close to that time, because then that data has to be input into the system.
Right, right.
So, once the data is input into the system, what does the system generate?
The system can generate, if you, um, the Qualtrics, it's Q-U-A-L-T-R-I-C-S website gives you a sense of the reporting capability that comes with a free version. We're looking at the free version, which limits questions to fifteen. It will, it drops the data back in a CSV format and also you can generate graphs and charts and visual analysis of the data.
And you can also turn, turn it into an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, it comes as a CBS file, so you can drop it, CSV file, so you can drop.
Comma separated, yes.
Yes, sorry, I said the pharmacy rather than comma separated.
Okay, so theoretically by two twenty-eight, all of the hard copy data and the electronically generated data will be completed. Now, the reports that would be generated will be segregated, correct me if I'm wrong, by the answers to the, the first question, are you a village resident? If yes, continue on. If you're not, go to something, some other place.
Correct. And we may not, I'm sorry, we may not totally, you know, I mean, the, the reports will come out that way, you know, those who. you know, I mean, the, the reports will come out that way. You know, those who said yes to, are you a village resident? Answered this way. Those who said, I'm a village business owner, answered this way, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the way the reports will come out. Not necessarily, you have to go to a whole different place. I'm not sure.
Well, you can, you can, with Qualtrics, with Qualtrics, you can, yes, I'm a village resident, you get this set of questions. No, I'm not a village resident, you get this shorter set of questions.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm questioning the answers, not the questions. So the, the, Qualtrics will be able to say, here are the answers from the village residents, here are the answers from this and from that.
Yes.
And, and are the, the questions, I'm assuming, are not yes and no? Is that correct?
Well, some of them are yes and no. Some of them are rating questions. Some of them are agree, disagree. It's a variety of questions.
Essentially, yes and no. And for those that are not yes or no, not binary, do, do they wait the answers? So if it's answer on a scale from one to five, one where it's really good, five where it's really bad, do, how do they wait, wait that? I'm assuming they wait it.
I don't know the answer to that right now, but I can find out the, I just don't know enough about, I don't know enough about the analytical detail of Qualtrics, but I feel confident, given the two researchers we spoke with and the survey designer we spoke with and the researcher we spoke with. They can answer the question better than I can.
They answer your question a little bit more. There, some of the, there were a few questions that say, for example, how effective is blah, blah, blah? And it would be not at all, you know, three or four or five different, which would be sort of what you're looking at.
Right.
All the way up to very effective. So that's sort of, and there, there are a few questions. Other than that, it would be just pick the things that you think are important, pick the, you know, pick the, what you think is important for what we need to look at and so on.
So for the answers to that, which do you think are important? I'm assuming that there, here are five different important things, and the sixth is other, which is, I'm assuming, a write-in. So you, you would get an answer that said, of the people that, that didn't lie and said they lived in the village, and they're not over 75, didn't lie about that either, that those responses, 10 people said one, 15 people said two, and so on. Is that correct? It's not weighted?
No.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, okay. So all that stuff will be done by about 2/28.
Right.
Then, Fran, you mentioned a report. Which, and I think you said that, that the report was going to be, going to be presented to the village board, and then it would form the basis of the 401 response to the state. I think that's.
Correct.
So let me, let me, I mean, in conjunction with this Larry and Officer, I'm sorry, who's the other?
D'Amato.
Officer D'Amato and Kathleen are working on the, getting the police manual together. So this is going to be a small portion of that. This is going to be, we did our survey, this is the responses we get. But, but in, you know, as we're doing that, that is being done, and they're talking to those in, who they're collaborating with, and eventually we'll open that piece of it up to the village for a public meeting where people can comment.
Okay, now.
So Marie, I, we will, Fran and I exchanged a series of dates today that we need to get with each other on to make sure that we've got it correct, but we'll share that with you. And I plan to outline, outline, provide an outline for the plan that we will fill in as we do the work. So we, we can provide information on what we've done with Lexipol and the status with Lexipol, what chapters we are working on in a priority way, our, how we have launched a survey, and we can fill in as we get survey results back, fill in a bit about survey. We can fill in a data chunk, we can fill in, so, so that as the survey is in the field and being responded to, we're at the same time working toward a draft of a plan that goes first to the trustees and then is available for public comment, so that we make the April 1st deadline.
Looking at, go ahead, Marie, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, you both know that I've had difficulty looking at the policy document.
Yes.
And, and what I tried to focus on was 400, the 400 things, which I can't remember what they were.
IAS-based policing was the first one.
Okay, so I'm assuming that the survey is, is being done to inform the updates to the policy document.
It is partially that and partially, so there are four parts of the executive order that lay out a variety of topic areas on which you are to collect public comment. An element of it is policy. There is also, let me just get my notes in front of me, so I'm telling you correctly. Sorry, just give me one second. I've got a pile of crap here from moving it out of the way. So there are, there are sets, sets of topic areas that you are intended to engage with the public on. What functions should the police prefer, perform? Employing smart and effective policing standards and strategies. And there's a variety of topics within those categories, including law enforcement strategies to reduce racial disparities and build trust, community engagement, fostering community-oriented leadership, culture and accountability, which includes tracking and reviewing use of force, internal accountability for misconduct, citizen oversight, data techno, data transparency. And then the last section is recruiting and supporting excellent personnel, which is not only about recruiting officers, but how you're, how you support officers with training and education and wellness. Officer wellness and wellbeing. So the survey deals with, which you'll see very soon on Friday, we've, we've nearly got a draft finished to present to you. The survey deals with those topic areas, and the policy work is happening, the policy work is happening at the same time. The survey is not the end of public comment on anything. The survey is just sort of a marking a point, an assessment of where we are right now. And the policy portion will be ongoing, and public, that will come before the public. Whenever we have reviewed the chapters and we're ready to release, that will be, the, the, the policies will be available. I know you're having trouble. I'm having with the, with the Google Drive. I need to figure it out. I need to figure out a better way to manage that large document.
Let me, let me jump in here.
To look at it.
First of all, I loaded, I loaded the 700-page document to Google Drive. It, it's horrible.
Yeah, it's too big.
It's not usable. And so I would, I would recommend not even going crazy. To answer your, part of your question, Marie, the survey doesn't necessarily have to, you know, service the writing of the report. One of the, the things that Kathleen just said are things we need to talk to the community about, not necessarily with a survey, also with, you know, other types of communication. The survey is a small piece of this, which, if we're honest with ourselves, is not required for this process. It not, you know, it's not mandated. A lot of, a lot of communities have done it. And most of the communities that have done it, have done relatively small surveys. We said we would do one, you know, we, we will do one, but it's not the be-all and the end-all. I mean, a lot of the points that Kathleen talked about, the four points, will be discussed when we open up to community comments.
Stakeholder groups, yeah.
So, you, you both know how painful it's been for just the five of us to go through two topics in the code, which consist of, I'm going to say, 11 pages. And that's with no public input at all. Is it realistic to think that the public will be able to go through the significant portions of the 700-page document and provide input that can be useful?
The public is providing input on, on the, the policies aren't going to be ready for public review. What the policy, what the public is providing feedback on, what the, what the governor's office asks for public feedback on is the municipality's plan to carry out policy review and engage with the public. That's what we're seeking public comment on before April 1st, is our plan to both review policy and engage the public. It's not intended that we're to finish the whole policy review by April 1st. It's not first. It's absolutely not possible. Absolutely not.
Okay, so we're in violent agreement about that.
Can I, can I step in here, Marie, for a quick second? Out of the, out of the 700 pages that Lexipol gives us, it's my job, along with Officer D'Amato and Kathleen to go over basically realistically to get input, but my job is to knock that 700 pages down to like probably, I want to say, 200 to 300 right off the bat, because we don't have a lot of the things that are in that policy. We don't have K-9, we don't have, you know, the specialized units. So right off the bat, I can knock that, those down. So once we get to the meat and potatoes of what's going to be for the village police department, and what we, what we have is, you know, part-time, full-time police department, once we get that all together, we can actually make it a little bit easier for the public to look at it and say, oh, okay, now I get A, B, and C. I get this part and that part. But there's a lot in that 700 pages that does, does not apply to us at all.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm back to the schedule then. By March 1st, there'll be a report that can be generated from Qualtrics. And then in the month of March, I thought you had, I thought there had been a mention of public meetings.
So at the same time that the survey is in the field, I am going to draft, sorry? I'm sorry, I thought you were done, Marie. I'm sorry. It sounded like you were finished.
So during the month of March, there will be public meetings. What will be the topic of the public meetings that will generate the report that the village files with the state on April 1st?
So while the survey is in the field, I am going to draft an outline for, for you all to review of the, the plan that we will send, that we will provide to the public and send to the governor's office. While the survey is in the field, Larry and I, Fran, whoever else has items to contribute, will be filling out the outline, so that we're fleshing out the document. Once we have the survey data, we can populate analysis from the survey data into the plan. That plan is the basis for what is provided to the, that, that plan is what is provided to the public to review and comment on and provide response to, which we then modify that plan based on comment as necessary, and send that plan that says, this is how we are currently engaging the public, this is how we are currently updating our policies, and this is what we plan to do going forward. That becomes the substance of the report, and we have to send via email to the budget office, a certification, a signed certification that says we have done these things.
We're not really asking the, the public to comment on our policy book as such.
Not yet.
Just the plan. We have done X, Y, and Z. This is the plan. If you look through it, and I have, I've reached out a couple of times to NICOM, and they have sent me very interesting links to different municipalities. Poughkeepsie is one that I found very interesting, where they basically say, in the first five or six or seven pages, this is Poughkeepsie, this is who we are, this is our demographics, this is our police department, this is our budget for the police department. And then they go on and say, this is what we've reviewed. We've reviewed section 401, and we're going to do blah, 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 two sentences. We've reviewed section, you know, so on and so forth, and, and two or three sections on what we've done. This is where we are. This is what we're planning to do. Thank you very much. We're done. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing process, but the fact that we can write something, and I've, I've looked at some of these others, it's not going to mean that we're done once this is.
Exactly, exactly. And I sent everyone, you can, you can see it on the NICOM website yourself. I did send some links to, there are a variety of drafts that have already been put up by NICOM to see how other communities have done their reports. And it is a tremendous range from 30-page documents with graphs and charts to a page of bullet points. There, there isn't a standard across the state. What we have to communicate is the work we've done and the work we plan to do.
So, I mean, the, the, what you just described in terms of the Poughkeepsie report, Fran, seems very straightforward.
Exactly.
If we could do something like that, and that's, and that is what is reviewed with the public?
Exactly.
That should be, and this is just, and I, I can share that. I don't know if I did or not, but I got it from, from NICOM, from the gentleman, actually, who's going to be presenting, I believe, on Thursday at NICOM. And it is very straightforward, so that should be fine.
Okay, and it seems like it shouldn't be controversial.
No, I mean, it shouldn't be. It's not saying we're done, we're finished, we're, you know.
Right, right.
You know, and, and some municipalities have said, well, we started reviewing our police handbook in 2019, and, and this is how far we've gotten so far, and this is, but, but it's not a whole long, you know, it was more about the demographics of who they are, who the, who the city is, what they do. And then some of both the, the points from the governor's mandate.
And almost, almost every municipality is requesting more time, which I thought was a nice thing to see, because we need more time. Now, that's neither here nor there. We'll get, we can get done. And keep it, and like I said, it'll be an ongoing thing for the rest of the year.
And the governor, the governor has very clearly said no. And so everybody's, every, every municipality that had to take, undertake this process is in the same position. If they haven't, if they haven't finished their work, they're going to be, they're going to be putting forward plans to varying degrees of completeness, just like we are. Okay, that's, that's actually really useful. If, if you look at the drafts on the NICOM website, it gives a real sense of the range.
Okay.
I, I just want to say, like, three weeks or four weeks ago, whenever we had our kind of heated conversation, this is exactly what I said was what we needed to do. I, I explained my interpretation of what the, what the EO was, which was to present a plan. That's what we're doing. Now we all agree on that. But at the time, I got incredible pushback. It was, I wasn't going fast enough. We were never going to get this done. And now everyone agrees. It's like the strangest thing. It's like, you know, I got beat up in the papers, like, you know, people like writing letters on how, you know, I wasn't interested in surveys, not interested in getting things done quick enough. You know, and now, now we're exactly what I was saying, we seem to agree on by some miracle, I guess.
It's great.
The interpretation was there right from the beginning. It was like, a plan is needed. That's why the governor's not going to change it, because it's not hard to meet what he's asking. The standard and bar is not that high. We could do and could have done exactly what he wanted and completed what he needs to this point. At four weeks ago, we were, we were engaging in Lexipol. We were going to do a survey. We could have put all of that in our plan of this is what we're doing moving forward. And it would have been accepted. You'd have to accept it. It's a plan. This is what our plan is.
So it's great that it lit a fire under our feet, and now we're in agreement.
I didn't have to light a fire under any feet, because there's no hurry. And that's the whole thing, is let's do it right. We don't have to have a survey done by this week. We don't have to have the survey done by April. We just don't. It's, you know, I'm not saying we don't have to, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, or we shouldn't try, but there isn't, there's, there's no need for a rush, or there's no urgency in this. Let's get the survey done, do it right. We're going to have, we're going to be reviewing questions out of session, like, you know, in our emails, which is, which is not, was frowned upon. It should be done in an open meeting. We should be discussing, we're discussing the topic or the questions that everybody is getting asked. But we're, we're setting it up, so we're going to have them by Friday, and we're going to send everything in, you know, to whoever, to you, so that you, you know, send our, our comments.
Can I be on the survey working group then? Can I, can I request again to be on the survey working group?
No, because it, it would be more than, it would be too many trustees on me.
What does that mean?
We have.
It's a freedom of information. It had, would have to be a, it would have to be a published, open to the public meeting.
And what's wrong with that?
We have to publish every time we talk. Every time we talk, we'd have to put, you know, we'd have to open it and have the press know that we're having a public meeting.
As to be.
I would be happy to be in, you know, take point on letting the press know and setting up.
At this point, we're just about finished.
But Dave just said there's no rush, so.
But we, but we're at a point where we're just about there. I mean.
Well, request was put in, denied.
I assume that, you know, there will be.
Well, yeah. My concern is that there's, it seems, you know, I think the value, the, the survey can be a really valuable tool. And what I'm hearing a lot of is, it doesn't matter, we don't have to do it.
It's not, no.
No, no, it's not what he's saying.
Where does that come from? Where does that, you know, that's what people are saying, but who is saying that? Did I say anything that would imply that a survey is not valid, useful, or that we shouldn't do it?
No, actually, Fran said it.
Actually, I did.
Offering to be on it, because I think it, it could be valuable, so I was just offering, since I'm interested.
What I said was what I got from NICOM, and from the lawyers at NICOM that said the governor's mandate, the governor is not mandating anybody to do a survey.
Right, but it's, there's a difference between what's mandated and what can be good for our community, and that's.
And when, when, when you're down to six weeks to get this done, uh, to me, if it's not mandated, you know, we need to maybe put it in the background, but since we're already almost there, um, I feel like, you know, don't drop it now. But, you know, the reality of it is, it's not mandated for this. There's not, nothing that says that a survey has to be done in this. Everything else has to be done, communication with the, with the, uh, with the stakeholders has to be done, you know, communication with the residents has to be done. Survey is, and we're at the point where it's almost done at this point, I don't want to drop it now. You know, the questions will be out in a couple of days.
Okay, I just think it's, it's useful to keep in mind that even though there may be a checklist of things that we have to do, that it's what we are able to do. I mean, the, the, there's an idea behind the governor's order that I think sort of gets forgotten, and it's, and it's about.
Well, trust me, it's not, it's not forgotten, it's, it's in line with, you know, all the other millions of things we're, we have deadlines for right now. And trying to, trying to be realistic about all of us in all of our other lives that we have to do, you with a storm, with a child, and everything else that we're trying to get done.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, Dave's saying there's no rush, and then, so there, but there is a rush, I just, if I can have more input on the survey, I look forward to it, um, I'll look for it on Friday.
Yeah, I think as a board, we all want to have more input on it, as soon as, you know, we see what the preliminaries are. I think we should all definitely have input on it.
Um, okay. I have other business that, if we, whenever we're done with this, too.
Did number fourteen before we got to the others, I gotta go ahead, Heidi.
Um, well, I just wanted to mention, um, that I have been in continual touch with the Tots Park volunteers, and am putting together a proposal for safe reopening of the park. Um, so we'll see if that's possible or not. But, and then in conjunction, um, thinking ahead to the spring about, you know, what kind of signage will be useful. Uh, and I'm hoping to have, uh, proposals, um, both for Tots Park and for, um, you know, larger spring plan, um, at the next, uh.
So, what kind, what kind of signage?
Um, I can send it to you what I sent to Dave, um, but if you look at other towns, a lot of them have sort of semi-permanent signage, like, uh, almost like parking signs that say, you know, masks required in this area. Or also, scenic Hudson does really nice, um, sort of fun signs about, uh, social distancing. And so I think some, um, mix of permanent, semi-permanent and temporary signs to, um, think ahead for COVID precautions for the, uh, for the spring.
And, and the ones that are currently on Main Street aren't good enough?
Um, based on what I've seen on Main Street, I think we could use some, some supplemental, uh, reminders, uh, based, just based on behavior, but I'm, I'm happy to make a proposal, and we can, to, to discuss it for, you know, what we've, what's working, and maybe what needs, um, additional support.
I think, I think bringing it to the board, and we can, when look at what, uh, you're proposing, or with Aaron, and, and go from there.
I apologize, I didn't realize that number fourteen was what I just talked about, so, so does that mean we're finished early? Obviously, didn't look at the, the, uh, obviously didn't look at the agenda too well. Does that mean we're finished, we can just jump on, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I purposely made that the last point. Knowing it was going to be the longest one.
I just think we'll be almost finished by now.
Let's talk about a wedding.
No, no.
Yet, unpaid taxes.
No, I haven't been doing, I haven't been doing anything other than lying on surveys.
I know.
See, I don't know, Marie, that's how you get in trouble.
Just a couple of updates, uh, from, on my point, uh, our parking committee, we've just had a couple of meetings, but moving ahead and concentrating on the residential parking permit. Couple of things have come to light and interpretations of the law that, uh, maybe we didn't quite see that, uh, are actually good things, so, um, will be discussed tomorrow night, we're meeting again, and hopefully get a little closer to, uh, coming up with a, uh, a parking permit, uh, you know, agreeing on ways to disperse permits, et cetera. And, uh, we'll need a public hearing on that, too. And we will have to add a public hearing to that, a public hearing on our short-term rentals, which we are almost finished with, or actually, that's gone to John, I believe. So, we're very close on the short-term rental, uh, being able to have a public hearing on that and move that along, so we'll be having a public hearing on that, along with the rest of the code update, which we're close to, um, finalizing also. And, uh, there'll be public hearings on that, so we're going to have, be chock full of, uh, of publics, public hearings in the next couple of months.
Yep.
Um, so, that's about all I have, and, uh,
Hey, can we sit down sometime this week and try with the calendar?
What's that?
I figure out when we're going to do all these public hearings, tentatively.
Yeah, I will stop down tomorrow, now that.
Because we're also on budget.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, we got a lot of work ahead. Okay, will do. Um, okay, so then we go to the big wedding.
No, unpaid taxes.
Unpaid taxes, really? Okay, unpaid taxes. Jeff, do you want to, or somebody want to go over that, or? I don't care.
Was this after proof, uh, for Michelle to forward the list? There's only five, uh, five properties, the, the unpaid tax that has to go to Putnam County. And they pay us then.
Motion to forward the, uh, unpaid tax list to Putnam County.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Now weddings.
Wow. Wedding for, uh, the bandstand, April third, four P M, no setup, a few chairs. Hartsdale, uh, thirty-five people.
Yeah, I'm, in thinking of.
Think about that.
Yeah, I, you know, thirty-five people in the bandstand doesn't really allow for social distancing.
Were they wanting to set it up, the chairs in the bandstand or around the bandstand, or it's not clear?
In the bandstand.
That's going to be tight.
They said no setup, just a few chairs, so I don't know what a few means, if you have thirty-five people, I guess they're going to stand.
Even standing, that's a problem.
Thirty-five people is too many.
If they could move them outside of the bandstand around, that would be fine.
That seems.
And just put a couple of chairs for the wedding party in the bandstand, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, the, the, uh, concern then would be for, if I were the, the bride, uh, the concern would be weather. You know, if it, if it rains or snows, or, or whatever, what am I going to do?
And I guess, I, I guess I have to enforce that and be the bad guy, right?
Break up the wedding.
Yeah, and it's, it's April third, um, it's not unheard of to get snow then.
And it's a Saturday, which is, could be a busy time in April.
It's, it's the day before Easter, for whatever that.
Oh.
Just want to put it in perspective of where in the calendar.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is just for the ceremony, right, Jeff?
Correct.
It's, it's one hour, Jeff?
Um, she said, set up at four o'clock, removing chairs at six o'clock.
Two hours.
So.
I think thirty-five people in that small space is just too many.
Yeah, I think we need clarification.
On how they're going to make, Jeff, can you get back to her and ask her how she plans to maintain social distancing with that number of people in that small, it is an outdoor space. Uh, it's protected, but it's an outdoor space, how she plans to do social distancing?
I think we'd accept, uh, I think if she had, like, just a wedding party, or there's maybe seven people or something on the bandstand, and the others are set up somehow in, around the bandstand, but to someone's point, if it's raining or whatever, that won't work, but definitely, I'm not for having everyone on the bandstand, or clustered around with any, with no control over it.
Doesn't the governor's executive order still prohibit gatherings of more than ten?
I don't know where it's at.
They, they, he opted for weddings and funerals, but I don't know exactly, know the number right now, he did up it.
So, that would be the first question, is what, how many are they allowed to have?
It's a percentage of the people that the function hall holds, with a maximum of, I believe, a hundred and fifty, but I think it might be just twenty-five percent.
So, if this is outside, then it's not a deal. Is there an occupancy on the bandstand?
No.
My only other suggestion was, Jeff, if you get, if you do talk to them, maybe you can push them towards the chapel of restoration. Uh, if that's an alternate site, if not, twenty-five is too much, thirty-five on that bandstand's too much.
Yeah, the price is going to be significantly higher at the chapel.
Yeah.
They could, they could maybe do the, um, the pavilion at Mayor's Park.
If we're asking for their social distancing plan, can we also ask for their mask plan?
Idea.
Doesn't, you mean, they're wearing masks?
Yeah, if it says on their invitation, masks required, if, you know, it, just what their plan is. Um, because I think, you know, there's a wide range there for what, what people do and what people expect.
Also, that'd be aware that it's April, which is a few months away, and, uh, you know, everything could change, so we can't guarantee it, even if we wanted to. Maybe the governor won't be happy that day. So, we'll just wait and ask for more information, say we're not, we can't have, uh, a significant amount of people on the bandstand itself. I think's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
We want to set a number?
I, I think you could safely have fifteen people on the bandstand and maintain a level of social distancing.
I don't know.
Feet apart?
I would, I would say less than that.
I think so, too.
Well, obviously, the bride and the groom don't have to be six foot apart.
So, we have three.
Until they're married, they have to be.
Okay, we're not touching that one.
I would say ten, maybe tops, eight.
I mean, is it useful to, is it useful to measure? I'm happy to walk down and measure. Maybe the bridal party is, the bridal party is, can be in the bandstand, but the audience needs to be spread, um, uh, below the steps.
I'd say best man, and, uh, um, and whatever, just the intimate party also.
The bridal party.
So, Jeff, if you could get more information for us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move ahead, so. Motion to table that.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, um, where are we at now?
Well, firefighters.
Firefighters, resolution.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, resolution, uh, zero three, two oh two one. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And we have second from Kathleen, I believe.
Yep.
Whereas, Article eleven A of New York State General Municipal Law requires that the list of volunteers who earned a year of service credit during two thousand twenty, uh, be approved by the fire department and submitted to the Board of Trustees for review and approval. And whereas, once approved, the list must be returned to the fire department, so that it can be posted for at least thirty days as required by Article eleven dash eight. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has reviewed and approved twenty twenty firefighters', uh, records listings. Roll call.
I'm here, I'm here. Uh, trustee Bender.
Hi.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Hi.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Hi. Thank you so much. Um, and now, what's, we're trustees, uh, we're down to minutes, is that right?
Bills.
Bill, where am I? Okay, who has bills?
I make a motion to approve batch number five eight nine two in the amount of eighty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents.
I will second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, we have a slew of minutes to approve here. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a second, we have a second?
I think Heidi.
I didn't say.
What's that?
I am. Second now.
We have a second, all in favor, or no, any discussion, sorry?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes, um, January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Uh, approval of minutes, February second, two thousand twenty-one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And finally, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Okay, um, we are now entering into the public comment portion of our show. If anyone has got their hands up, or, Michael?
Um, I don't see any hands. Um, I cut, uh,
Okay.
Either literal or figurative.
I will, uh, then make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, uh, how do you, how do you put your hand up?
Well, there's a little thing on, um, on Zoom, or you can do what you just did and speak up.
All right, uh, can I, can I go and have?
Yeah, just to identify yourself.
Okay, uh, my name is Paravamos, I live at Sixth Rock Street, um, in Cold Spring, and I'm glad that we're going to be surveyed, and that there are going to especially be some hearings about the police, uh, about looking at the police department, I hope that the police department does not see it as adversarial, that I, I think this is a great opportunity to look at what our village needs and what makes sense for the village, and I would also wish for the village to consider taking in the input of, um, people that are just passing through and visiting, because that is an important portion, I think, of like what happens in village life. I don't know if we collect, um, any information about, like, the race and age of people that are, uh, having police interactions, but I think that would be interesting to look at. And, um, the idea that you can only do a survey if you have a different IP address than somebody else, I think means that only, you can only do one survey per household, which I don't know if that's the intention, and I don't know if I'm right about that. And I'm also really happy to hear that, that you're looking at reopening the Tots Park, I think that it's a necessity for health reasons, mental health reasons, and, uh, it's all outdoors, so it seems to me to be safe relative to something like indoor dining. That's all I have to say, thanks. Oh, wait, but, uh, somebody else has somebody's thing to say, because we have different stuff to say, even though we're at the same IP address.
This is Alan Spiegel, and, you know, my comment actually is about the IP address, and it will be hard to get meaningful um, identification of village residents by that, to start with. Anyone who uses, uh, Optimum online, the cable provider here, as their service provider, they will be identified by GOIP as being in Wappingers. Anyone who say, besides, uh, fill out the first survey while, you know, sitting in the, um, in line, or in the coffee shop somewhere outside of the village, they're going to be identified as being somewhere else. So, I, I think that's going to be really problematic, and I also had the concern about that the main households are typically bigger than one, and limiting to one response per household is cutting out a lot of people. Thank you.
Um, Eliza had her hand up.
Sure.
Hi, everybody. I just want to thank you all for the, all the amount of hard work and, um, pushing through, that it's taken. pushing through that it's taken to get there, this is a huge project and, um, deadline is too short for the amount of work that goes into it. And I'm hearing from, you know, Officer Burke and Kathleen and Murray and Fran, just the whole board, the amount of energy that's going into this, so I really appreciate, um, that you guys are taking it seriously and, um, thoughtfully. I, I do wish that, uh, the survey had a little more time to do, be run than two weeks, that seems really short to me.
Eliza, sorry, sorry to throw, I can't, you're really digitized, I can't really hear you that well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that sounds way better. I missed most of what you had said, I was trying to concentrate.
Now you can see the pores in my face. No, I was, I was, you know, just saying that I, I really appreciate, appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this and the thoughtfulness that, um, obviously many or all trustees are very passionate about this, um, particular project for the amount of time you're putting into it and just to get it done. For the, um, the governor's deadline, which seems like no one's going to get it done in, in that time, no, no village or no town. Uh, so it, we, in light of that, thinking about the fact that it, it probably isn't gonna, it's not going to be completed um, by then, I guess I wish that we had a little bit more time as a community to fill out the surveys, I know. Um, having done surveys in the community before, it takes weeks and sometimes like more than a month to get up, like more than forty responses on a survey, and hopefully you're the village, um, residents will take it seriously and, and go to the website, but um, I, I know it just takes time to get people to respond to these things, and, and you want a very specific pool, obviously, of people to respond, um, so I would, I would wish that maybe a month were given, uh, since it's not gonna be completed by April first anyway. And, uh, yeah, I, I look forward to seeing the survey that you guys come up with, thank you so much for working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Timothy Haskell has his hand up.
Okay.
Oh, hey, um, Timothy Haskell, thirteen Church Street. Uh, I, I don't have much, I just, I just wanted to support the survey as well, um, I'm looking forward to the to, to doing it, to receiving it, to looking at it, and, um, I'm very appreciative that you guys are spearheading it. I know it's mandated, but I'm glad that you guys are, are taking it seriously. Um, I also had a question, um, you know, I, and this is partly me, just, uh, I probably find this out, but, um, you know, I was reading Cuomo's, uh, most recent, I get, you know, as I'm sure many people did, his emails, his little briefings and saying, oh, I'm about to open up uh, indoor dining again, where you know, we've had, I feel like we've had indoor dining this entire time. What, uh, what, what are, is our town, I, I'm a little unclear as to what, where we are in terms of mask mandates and dining mandates and like, where, where is a, a good place to find those answers out and like, or it's easy to answer. Cause I've noticed at my shop, I bet there's been progressively less people that are, are wearing masks. And, um, uh, in the last week or so, I've had to ask people to wear their mask more than the, the prior ten months. And so I, I was curious as to if there's anything mandated or if there's anything being enforced.
I don't think there's anything mandated unless, uh, the, and maybe, and I could be wrong on as far as like a municipality themselves on our main streets or whatever. Um, I think, uh, we were thinking when everything first started up to, to do that, and, uh, and I think you still could. Um, you have to, it just can't be something you'd like to do, I, I forget what's attached to it, something's attached to it, but you can do that, that's like an emergency, I think, uh, precaution or, or, or something along that line, but that could be done. I, I think that mandates, um, for stores and individual, you know, merchants, I think that's up to the merchant, I think if you have, I think you can mandate uh, having masks if, for people to come into your store. As far as the dining, I, I think it was supposed to be, it's open here, I, I'm not sure if they're just doing something in the city or not, but I think in our area, it's supposed to be half of the, uh, half of the capacity of the, uh, of the establishment, and I'm sure there's a six-foot um, a spacing requirement, and I don't know if that's being, you know, followed or not.
I think, I think there's a, there's a website, forward dot NY dot gov, which gives you all of the guidelines. Uh, and that's where it's been, the guidelines have been since the beginning, so if you look there, you'll be able to find it by, uh, by region and by, um, you know, what kind of industry you're in, so you made, that may be helpful to you if you're looking at lines.
The ma- mask mandate on Main Street is something we could consider, right?
Yes.
Sorry, Rebecca, go ahead.
Say that again, Heidi?
Um, I was saying, it, the board could consider a mask mandate on Main Street. Um, and it might be something we wanna discuss depending on the numbers, um, cause I also have noticed a lot of people not wearing masks on, on Main Street.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of what I was.
Yeah, I don't, we don't currently have a mask mandate on Main Street, um, you know, it would definitely be something that we, we could discuss with the board, and I think would be worthwhile to discuss.
I would like that discussion.
Thanks, Tim.
I was gonna add.
I'll follow up with our attorney on that and see what, what requirements are, I, I know there's something of that, so I know you can do it. I don't know if you can do it anytime, or if it's, I'm, I'm sure if we're in the middle of a pandemic, we can do it, I'll have to ask him again. I'll pine down that earlier, I can't remember what his.
Yeah, we would appreciate it, simply as we think about how a reopening of the store, you know, once, once the, once this gets better. Um, I just had one quick comment, I just wanted to say thank you also for, um, working together and collaborating on that survey. Um, I would also, uh, piggyback on what Eliza Starbucks said in terms of the survey. Anytime you're doing a survey, it takes a really long time for people to find out, since I was hearing that there's not really, um, a time, a tight timeline, uh, I would always suggest, uh, more time so that people could find out about it. And, uh, for that IP, uh, concern that, uh, Taravamos had mentioned, I would say that uh, paper surveys could also be picked up somewhere. I mean, we would volunteer if we wanted surveys to be picked up at the, at the shop. Uh, but, uh, but they can be input, they can be input manually, I know that's not, you know, that might not be the, the process that you want, but that it, that does tackle a little bit of that IP address, uh, limitation. That's all.
Cassie Trainor has her hand up.
Okay.
Hi, um, so I had a question.
Identify yourself and, and where you live, please.
Oh, yes, I'm Cassie Trainor, um, and I have lived in Cold Spring for a long time, but right now I am with my parents. Um, but I had a question about the service you're using for the survey. Um, you said that you can segregate responses from folks outside of the village versus, um, inside of the village. Um, it seems as though that members of the board favor a more limited pool of responders, so for that, my question is, if you are uncomfortable with the um, responses that you receive from the larger pool, um, what's the accountability on throwing out those answers versus keeping them, especially when it seems that the um, IP address is not the most reliable source for tracking that information?
I'm not sure how, how the rest of the board feels, I mean, we're, we're taking a recommendation from our, our small, uh, small group, which is Larry and, uh, and Fran and Kathleen, um, which are saying that we should do an electronic, and this is how we, they're, they're laying that all out. My preference is actually to, my preference is actually to do, uh, door-to-door, uh, and I think that the, actually the governors, I, I, I have a different interpretation with the governor wants, I, I feel that it's the community, meaning our residents and their relationship and police and strengthening that, and looking at policies and strengthening, strengthening those also. Um, the broader one kind of doesn't really, you know, it, we can go there, and that's already been discussed on whether, you know, we should, you know, uh, expand that to, uh, non-residents. Um, the committee seems to, uh, to agree or wants to do that, so um, I, I guess you could ask the rest of the board how they feel, I personally think it should be locals, I think we should, if I have to do it and go door-to-door, I'll go door-to-door with Rebecca and, uh, I'll fold the, uh, I'll fold the questionnaires and I will put them in, in door hangers.
Let me, let me clarify, I mean, when we talked about, um, doing it electronically, I mean, the questions, where are you resident? Uh, and how long have you lived here, I'm not advocating that we're going to outside of the village residents as much as, you know, we're looking to find people who are residents and who are, are business owners here. You know, unfortunately, if you do it electronically, you're gonna end up picking up people that may not live here. Uh, but it wasn't our, it wasn't our choice to, um, to get everybody who, you know, lives in Nelsonville or lives in any place in, you know, Phillips Town or, or any place in, in the county. Um, it's the Village of Cold Spring Police, and that was the aim we were going at, it was just in the, in the and trying to get it done and to trying to get it into a place where we can analyze it. Um, we went on electronic.
Well, I think we also agreed that we would make paper copies available, either via Village Hall, or if people requested them, we could drop them off, Larry talked about taking into Chestnut Ridge in particular, but I'm, I've certainly, that's something that I, I understood us to be open to, is providing paper as well. It's, it's clear we need to get clarification on the IP address, um, I was not under the impression that one could not deliver from different email addresses. Um, but we'll, 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 we'll get it, we'll make sure that we understand exactly how that works. Um, and, and report back.
Um, and I also say we were split on, um, you know, who should be included, how wide it should be included. Um, you know, some of us feel that anyone who interacts with the Cold Spring Police Department can offer valuable insight, you know, we might have some people who come once a year, but we might have visitors who come once a week, twice a week, so that is why we have the question, are you a village resident, are you not, so that people who are not village residents can still have input. Um, in terms of, you know, what's done with that data, you know, my hope is that we'll, we'll be able to make all data available, but I, I guess we'll have to see how many responses we get. Um, but, you know, I feel strongly that that is something, you know, that we're, we, we should look at and we can look at because we have that question. You can still take the survey if you're not a resident, um, and I think it'll be I think there will, there will be some discussion amongst the board and probably with Larry as to what um, input will be taken, but the nice thing is that we'll also have, um, public meetings, so um, you know, if, if residents have opinions on who should, on what responses should be incorporated, um, you know, we, we can hear that.
I don't see anyone else asking to speak.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you.